Synchronized? We won't worry about that. We're going by my watch and one on the back wall here is now six o'clock. Would anyone stand please? Will I ask Mr. Franklin to say, "I bless your force and this way forward."
My gracious heaven to Father, we praise you for another day, God. God, and I pray that you'll touch each and every one that's here in this building, God. God, and I pray that you'll touch us as we make decisions for this county, God. God, and we give you the praise and the glory for each and every thing that we do, in your name. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. The Constitution, the good fight of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the heavens, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me start off by making a couple of comments. First of all, I appreciate you being here. This is, this is a great turnout. I appreciate you taking your time out of busy schedule. If you have an agenda, you notice the first thing we put was public comment. We put you first because we know how busy you are and how important time is. So if you want to make a comment, we'll do that first in case you don't want to stay. But we welcome you to stay for the whole agenda. A couple of comments about comments. We don't want to, we don't want to get in a question and answer time because we've got too many people tied up. But we welcome your comments, your questions. And then if you would give us a day or two or so, we'll be glad to answer questions if you have questions. But if you have a comment, we'll take those comments in consideration on any issue that you would like to make a comment about. So do we have someone who'd like to make a comment? All right, so come forward, please. You may wish to sit down. Would you please state your name when you come up to make a comment, please?
I'm Bob Davis-Balston, Commissioner. Thank you for an opportunity to comment at this meeting. I was at 387 Woodton Road with my wife Reverend Scarlett K. Balston and my mother-in-law, Mrs. Naomi Adams. I appreciate the county's efforts to fill potholes on Woodton Road during my last six years of residence. However, more extensive work is needed. The road condition is a hazard and an embarrassment to Woodton taxpayers. Please consider the following observations. The last resurfacing of Woodton was inadequate. Consequently, the shoulders had disintegrated and gravel forms in lower places due to thin surface, and potholes had no substrate to adhere to. The road now has only one lane and passive vehicles must drive off the road. A culvert area disintegrated on the edges and left a four-foot drop-off. Drivers are eluded of this dangerous condition only by a metal post protruding from the ditch. There are two blind curves on the road. The first is flat but has trees and shrubs blocking visibility. The second is hilly and dangerous to traffic from both directions. There are no warning signs or places to get off the one-lane road. School buses use Woodton Road, which presents a dangerous condition for transport and offloading children on this one-lane road. Handicapped people who live on the road are thoughtful and hurt during transport on the road. The taxpayers on Woodton Road have been speech vehicle maintenance due to the road's condition. I would appreciate your attention to these conditions and positive action to correct them by a proper re-surfacing of Woodton Road. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment, and we'll start to put that road down. Observation and consideration.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, that road is already the ORL's. It's number one ORL's.
Really informing that we already have that road with the copper plot list. Appreciate you bringing that up.
Billy, who's a teenager, I cannot, I don't know about that. I, can I say, I spoke with a couple of residents on that and I asked her and she's in the process of asking about like what.
It would also be in conjunction with some proposals we've had for residents in the area as related to water. So we might approach both of these aspects from the same level of consideration.
Absolutely. Appreciate that. Next comment? Yes, sir.
I'm Gene Dogrell, my wife is in Thurman on 816 Red Hill Road. And I'll be real with you, we need some help on the road. All right, very low is two cars and me and down in front, Mr. Harold Pritchett. It's very, very one-lane road. We just need some help on the road. And I appreciate y'all here.
Well, I appreciate you bringing that information. Do we have that road on there?
My, my understanding on that, the ambulance went over to get, pick up somebody and they got stunned. Because what's happened, the road's just gotten narrower and narrower over the years. And so, you know, so Billy and myself and maybe the county engineer may have to get together. We may can do some changes to that. We'll have to look into it.
I'd just like to add that the ambulance was turning in my driveway. I'm Harold Pritchett that Gene was talking about. They were going to get our neighbors down below us, so they called the ambulance. And they had gone by the house and they pulled in my driveway and backed out. And the road is just narrow enough for one car to get, I mean, it's wide enough for one car to get down. When they backed out, they backed out a little too far and into the ditch. So they got out, but it took them a minute to get out. And one, another concern is, is ambulances. If, in certain areas of the road, it's not wide enough to meet another car, and it's certainly not wide enough for an ambulance or a fire truck to get down. And backing up and maneuvering and if they should meet another car and trying to get out, to maneuver around could mean the difference in somebody's house burning up or somebody dying.
That's what we're looking for.
A lot of those areas are things to take into. Next comment?
First of all, I want to, Jeanette Smith, and I'm Miss Jenny. I'd like to thank you for following through, all of you, on what you said you'd do. It's a very wonderful beginning and I look so forward, forward to working with you all year. My comment is on Fairview Farm Circle. It, I wouldn't say it's too narrow, but it is full of potholes. And I don't know, last month you, you folks commented on if it's deemed unsafe. And I don't know what that is or I don't know how you deem that, how far you go with that statement. But it could ruin our car, I know, and we have a beauty, it's a heavy car. We have truckers that go on it, but I've never, ever seen them speed. The very reverend of the road, I've never, they just crawl on our road. And every time, and I just feel like it needs to be surfaced in a different way because we have this issue like every three months, especially in the late seasons.
Well, I appreciate that, and let's put the Fairview Farm Circle down. Next comment?
I'm, I'm, I live 916, I see where it's at. This, I should, that's why everybody's on that, we just, like, to get on the list and get anything done, but we got about seventeen families on about a mile. And we have, they've been good on, on the road condition, trying to keep some gravel on the road, rain and mud and all, but we, we got bad spots in the road and it's, it's just like any other dirt road, you just not icing and without a lot of bags traffic. And we have more sand cross traffic. Most of the average families that live on the road just go over and come home. But we have just numbers of cars coming through from the sand cross side, you know, just like the interstate. And they got a pretty good paved road, and I wish I had a one-paved road to get out on, but, but, but we don't have. And we've got two, we've got two school buses coming through and one that comes through just uses it for a shortcut, nobody's on it. And we got tractor and trailer coming through the road, chicken trucks and egg trucks. And you can, I actually, I've just backed, found a place to, to get around. And we've had a, not a problem with just one guy on the whole road that kind of, he didn't say one sound right away, he said he didn't want to, but he don't live there and it's just a barn there and they come once a month or so to the place. But the people on, on the right side of the road, everybody agreed on the whole road. They would get right away on the other side of the road if we could just get, you know, car and driver's road. But I think, Mr. James, I said we couldn't help road like every, actually a state road. Move to state regulations.
No, I advise, if we were to utilize state money, it has to meet state criteria.
But actually, we don't have easement on one side of the road.
That's one house, one place that I, where it's not a half village, it's a barn. That they have people on it out before it's a pound.
One of the problems is, is actually the first residents, when you come off, was fifty-one. And based on my research, I believe they own almost a half mile of fundage. Is, is that correct, Tom?
It's probably closer to something like that. But I don't know how you do roadwork, stuff like that. The road is pretty, pretty good road, they just place it for you. We do have a problem, you know, in, in meat cars. As I say, most of the people that live on the road are alert to it and they watch out for themselves. We've been there sixty-three years, on the farm, sixty-three years, and we've tried for most of them years to get a road, but it never has happened.
It poses a bad situation because the law says we can't get on private property.
People can move, move roads, I mean, just, if people on the other side of the road all the way down.
I, I'd say definitely need to look at all options.
They agreed, people on the right-hand side of the road are, you know, such, it made no difference, they'd do anything, you know, to get a road. And we, we have some problems, we're running through any gaps on our, our road. And we have, the bridge, we have, I know this ain't on the, that agenda, but we, we get all the dollars, yes. We get our share, and soon, I mean, I beg, the Lord be your God, to be our salvation.
We'll, we'll take a look at that. I appreciate you, it's very, I appreciate you.
Okay, Mr. Fox, I need to enter a plea for a fellow that's not here.
No. I'm a old person, I'm high up there and I live over Ken, and, and I have no need of a paved road because I live on it. And I asked him, it was a simpler time and it was an earlier time, and I asked our commissioner, could he help me with a paved road? He said, "We'll have to see." And he researched, did what he did, and he determined to pave my road cheaper than we could do the state. We, we have problems, Jeff and I have been out on the hall of the hill two, five days trying to build a back to put. When people already have power and have telephone, if you care less about how it works, why do you worry about a light bulb, an easement? I reckon we have some sort of an eminent domain, ditch to ditch. And if tarred gravel would be cheaper than, say, my little road, I think the commissioner at the time told me it cost sixty-eight or sixty-seven thousand dollars to do a grave. And then another thirty-five to forty, we told him to pay it, and he didn't pay it. So we had to go out up into the middle of the road and haul that off and dump it in the field. And I was glad to get that done and paid it for twenty-seven thousand dollars, which would have been the best trade for the taxpayer and the citizen down there. And my suggestion was, if we work a little smarter, it might be a little cheaper and both of us might get on the pay.
Yes, Franklin, will you come forward, please?
This is, I'm Sheila Lavalli and this is that, and let's really quickly on Woodton Road again. My neighbor had this petition that we had assigned that I wanted to, we'd give people guys and we were waiting for her to arrive. This is in addition to the paving. You mentioned it, that you had considered the water, and we just want you to know that we very much appreciate having some county water there. We, it would entail connecting, I think it's the Franklin Springs and, and county water lines, which is about four tenths of a mile. And then Woodton Road itself is about three quarters of a mile. And we have several residents down there. We have two families that live on one family property that share a well that runs about three feet of water. There's a poultry farm, I still have our road with ten poultry houses. We have severe iron problems and at this point we're having water odors sometime. And it's, it's just a bad situation. And if we can get county water, we would certainly appreciate this.
My name's Lane Daly, and I'm here on behalf of the residents on Stonebridge Road, Stonebridge Terrace, and Allen Farm Road. I'll just read what we have as our petition. We, the residents, have given up, read some of the board of commissioners to supply county water to our residences. We understand the cost of billiards with, with the water supply and are willing to pay those. We appreciate you considering this to be a very important issue as some of the residences listed below have had substantial water issues and are in need of safe supply of water for their families. And these are the names and the addresses that are interested in having water supplied. So we have it above us and below us, where we live, on eighteen ninety Stonebridge Road. It runs from McGee Road and then, I think it's Gravesville Road, so we're just right there.
Just linked.
Yeah, and then almost everybody up and down the road, from Allen Farm Road to Uniwade are very much interested, so we appreciate y'all considering that. Thank you so much.
All right, next comment?
My name's Erica and I live at two ten Butterfly Court in Brittany Harbor South. And I would like to see our head coach, have an assistant to help him do his job. He told me he had, quote, "too much on his plate," unquote, "to help, to help with a junky dilapidated home behind mine." I see it every day when I open my blinds and I wanted him to ask the owner to clean it up. I even offered to help the owner with the cleanup, but he did not have time to contact me. More trash is getting dumped there and trash like furniture, old mattresses, things like that. And I would just like to be able to help with that. And I'd also like to volunteer to help y'all with your website to help it get updated because I'm an excellent typist and transcriptionist.
Great. Now, would you give us address of your residence?
My residence? Two ten Butterfly Court? Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Next comment? Yes, sir?
I'm Gene Lewis from Lavallion. And about a year and a half ago, in one of these meetings, mostly because we're here, but I recommended, and I spoke to you about it recently, a display on a screen with a machine that anything you're looking at, we can look at. Hart County does it very nicely. Now, I can make an appointment there with John Kami if someone would like to go look at what they do. But that way the audience can see what you're doing. And putting it on the plane wall is not it, it needs to be on a screen. And it needs to have the right computer program to do it. At the time I brought it up, they thought they didn't need it. And then they decided after I persisted two times that they would, but they just flash it on the wall and it's, it's worthless. I'm trying to help you not make a problem.
I got you. Let me ask you one quick question. Will a hard copy serve this as well?
Well, the way, the way the meetings are done, that they're another place, I've been to a lot of these kind of meetings, what, what it is, if the, the manager can have the data going and as you guys talk and present it to the public, he can display that stuff at random on what needs to be displayed to cover the data. And just to cover this on the wall is.
And I'm not talking about the agenda, I'm talking about the budget. Like we put on the wall with a hard copy, serve the same purpose. We're just brainstorming.
Yeah, that's, I'm just here as a citizen too, but, but I've seen this in work other places with the little computer with the dead dial. And it's very informational to the public to do that. And a hard copy, I don't think that cuts it good enough. But it's something that you need to explore for your benefit, no matter, except as a citizen.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other comment? Yes, sir?
My name's Fred Hawley. I actually live over in Perth, I mean, right across the break of that line by a piece of property over in Lavallion, four sixty-three, and I've been coming to these meetings the last couple of months talking about the lease law. And I could pass out these, I believe one, one copy would be obviously pretty grotesque when they look at it. These are pictures and these are some articles of the people that were killed last year by wild dogs, or dogs get loose. The pictures there, unfortunately, like I said, it's pretty grotesque, but if one of these children were yours and they got bit by a dog like this, you'd want something about. Now, I've been bringing up loose dogs because I hunt and I have a neighbor that just constantly lets his dogs on the lot. And of course, you know, being a hunter, they're running the deer off and that's what the whole focus of me buying my property was. And I leased another piece of property next to me and put the income back into the community. But you can't carry on those kind of activities, you know, when you've got dogs on the road. The other way, you've got a pit bull. I'm down in my gold, or in the stream, paying for gold and a, and a pit bull runs up on me, you know, first thing you do, you pull out your gun, you know? You don't want to shoot somebody's dog. Let, let's face it, the dog's gonna come at me, I'm gonna shoot, you know, and it's scary. And I don't want to be that right bad, and I haven't shot somebody's dog, but I've got my gun with me. Now, we've been talking about this since November. I've been talking with the sheriffs, probably over two years. I've had the sheriff out on my property six different times to waste the taxpayer money for the sheriff to come out my property, one of the deputies. He comes out and tells me there's nothing he can do because there's nothing on the books with the lease law. Up the street, Thomas, he was there at the meeting, he told me if you guys put it on the books, he'll enforce it.
Got you.
So I think for the protection of the citizens of Franklin County, we need to do something about it. I'm a dog owner, I've got dogs in my backyard, they don't go out in my backyard unless they're on leash. You know, I don't want my dog biting someone, I don't want someone else's dog biting me or anyone else. But I'm trying to, that's serious about doing some kind of lease law.
We, we obtained this information, I did, the first meeting that we've had. We will give you an answer come Monday and we'll have a regular session.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any other comment? I appreciate those comments. That really helps us to make decisions because we look broadly at each concern that you have. Keep in mind, we don't have a magic wand, but keep in mind, we are sincere about the head. And so we'll do all we can. Moving along the agenda here, DA is with us tonight, we'll thank him for coming. Mr. Fox, would you come up?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, thank you very much for having me here tonight. I didn't actually prepare anything, I just wanted to talk to you about a letter submitted requesting additional, or county supplement for my, the person I intend to hire as my chief assistant district attorney. I, I kind of thought I knew what I was getting into when I took over this office, at least I, based on the examination of the cases and the way things are being handled from the outside, I thought I had an idea. But getting into the office and seeing retention files stacked for years and years in closets with no organization whatsoever, these are closed files, but still very important. Seeing a, a circuit that has one-fifth of the population, you know, my office is responsible for the prosecution of all felonies in, in all five counties in the circuit, as well as misdemeanors in four of those five counties. Elder County has a state court, therefore, they handle the misdemeanors. But with the county, the, the circuit has a population of about a hundred and eight thousand people. And to compare, the Augusta Circuit, for which I have been prosecuting, is about five hundred thousand people total. With twenty, eighty assistant district attorneys in that circuit. And this circuit has more open cases than Augusta does, with five assistant district attorneys and about a fifth of the population. The backlogs are massive, the cases going back, there are four, five, six, and some cases ten years old, evidence is stale, it's, it's a, it is, it is such a deep state of neglect that the, this office has not been performing in any way that deserved this community. And fixing that is going to be a herculean effort. The one assistant district attorney has left, the, the person I intend to hire to put in his place is, is, that slot doesn't want anything to put him in. Because my, my office has to remain budget neutral by the prosecuting attorney's counsel, I'm going to have to, if I am able to hire him on February first, which I, which I'd like to do, I have to furlough him until February seventh to begin with. I can't pay him until that day. In addition, I'm not allowed to increase his salary, even though he's coming from a position of being a team leader in Augusta, to being my chief assistant district attorney, we could have a great deal more responsibility with all the, the attorney, my other attorneys supporting him, responsible for the, the training of law enforcement in the area, which we've already met with members of law enforcement, we had a sit-down on Martin King Day, all the, the heads of law enforcement from all, all the agencies, including Department of Natural Resources, the Georgia State Patrol, the GBI, the various police offices and the sheriff's offices, will all sit down and talk about the way forward. We're going to be organizing a sit-down like that every, every six months to talk about not only intelligence gathering in the area, but also make sure that we're all on the same page and we're, we're investigating cases in a way that we, we, I think is, is best suited to having effective prosecution and result in a, in a conviction. But that said, Mr. Fergus, because of tax rules and I'm attempting to take him from one circuit to another, I'm not allowed to increase his salary. Those are the rules. When you poach from another circuit, you have to keep them at the same rate they're being paid by the, at the state level. So he'll be taking on a great deal more responsibility and a great deal more work, but the, the rules say I can't pay him any more money. But that's problematic because Mr. Fergus, in addition to the work he does in Augusta for the, the district attorney's office, in order to make ends meet, he actually teaches night classes at two different universities to support his family. He has a, a wife and, and three children. His wife is a homemaker and he, and she homeschools his children. No one gets into this, this line of work for, for the money and we really don't. And that's not what this is about. This is about my ability to, to take the best lawyer in Augusta and bring him up here and have him serve this community. And Ashley Wright, the district attorney in Augusta, already told me that she was going to kick me in the shins the next time she saw me if I managed to actually take Mr. Fergus from her office. And that he really is that, that good of an attorney and a good of a man. He is an outstanding trial attorney. He's a deeply Christian man. He took a year off from the DA's office in Augusta to go, uh, work as a missionary in Pakistan, bringing his wife and three boys with him on that, that, that year-long mission. But without, without the ability to, to pay him at a rate commensurate with the, the duties, responsibilities taken on, I don't think he'd be inclined to come along and I'd lose the, the ability to have. The only person that I think would, I could trust is my right-hand man. In addition to that, the former chief assistant, Mr. Droman, he indicated to me he would be leaving. He's still staying on the office. He's going to be made a, made a senior assistant district attorney. He'll be handling business in Elder County. But even though he'll be reporting to Mr. Fergus, he'll be still making eighteen thousand dollars a year more than, than Mr. Fergus will be if this supplement is approved. If it's not approved, he's going to be, he's going to make almost thirty thousand dollars more than Mr. Fergus is going to make. So I, I'd like your support and helping, uh...
So you're saying that you cannot increase his salary, you know, but you can give, offer him supplements, kind of provide some?
That, that's correct. In fact, that, that's, that's the normal course in most circuits, particularly when, when a, when a DA's office handles misdemeanors in addition to felonies. It's, it's, it's commonplace for the county in order to avoid the additional expense of having a state court to provide county supplements to salaries for, for the district attorney.
Any questions?
I'd say basically what you wanted to do was also around Hart County and Overford and all those others too. Is that right? I have. I've sent letters just like you. They've been approved by Madison County. It was about nineteen hundred dollars. It was based upon division by population and overall amount of, I, I broke down the population of each county and, and split it among based upon the, the, the population as representative of a percentage of the overall circuit. And it's been approved by Madison County. Hart County has approved it, uh, conditioned on the approval by the other counties. Uh, we've got approval from, from Elder County. We're going to get through the, the five percent fees for Elder County. We'll be receiving them from there as well. And I should have an answer back from, from Overford County by the end of the week.
Why don't we try to give you an actual Monday?
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jim.
Chairman, we go down to the next office gentleman, National Chairman.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, and you listen, I really appreciate the time to talk to you. I appreciate all that we do. And I'm going to try to read this. Did you all get a left of copy in your boxes yesterday? Great, so you have a, a heads up. Let me just say this. I really appreciate Fred, um, Toley's comments right there with the, the purpose of having a dog leash ordinance would be really for the safety, the health and happiness of all children, adults, domestic pets, and livestock. And just a few statistics. In the United States, approximately four point seven million persons are bitten by dogs, by dogs every year. And I contacted CDC. I was not able to get statistics for Georgia, but I can in a couple of days. And only about seventeen percent of all dog bites are reported. So that means there's a lot more. Half of dog bites, this is concerning, obtaining medical care were those for children. The rate of dog bite related injuries is highest for children ages five to nine. And the, uh, for younger children, uh, the predominant injuries are to the head and neck, which can be very, very devastating. I personally, I've lived here sixteen years and I've lived in Georgia all my life. And the other places that I lived, I don't have to mention, but they had leash laws. And so it's been very concerning to me. I had a near miss. I have pit bulls that live near me and the, and the fellow breeds them. And he had a very aggressive pit bull. And I'm pretty good with dogs. And he would just wander into my area and I'd be working. And I kind of, um, was able to, he didn't do anything. But I wanted to let the neighbor know, hey, I don't want your dog on my property. And long story short, I went over to the house and that dog was there. And I walked by foot. I gently backed out. He was ready to kill me. And I've had some near misses by just little bitty dogs. I love to walk. You know, little dogs can come and bite you and always carry a stick. And, uh, my good friend Patrice that lives up the road, um, she can't even walk. Her dog's on a leash because there are loose dogs that can attack her or other dogs. I've had a neighbor on Smith Road, he lives on that really sharp curve and people don't drive the speed limit. He has had to bury, not his dogs, but to bury five or six dogs just because of irresponsible owners. And I'll say this, I did a lot of research. I learned a lot. I'm not an expert on, uh, dog leash ordinances, but I'm learning more. And I tried to include, because I know the frontovers and people that hunt and, and people that have acres. So I kind of gleaned from websites, uh, looking at all the states. And while I worded it in a kind of a, uh, a legal manner, I'll just kind of hit the highlights of, or suggested proposal. I suggest that it be unlawful for any dog owner or other keeper of a dog to allow his dog to run at large off of a property owned, rented, or controlled by him. And there should be consequences, uh, that the dogs could be impounded, adopted, and disposed of. And then there's one exception. I know Fred Toley is a hunter. And I found this in one of the states, that an exception to that law would be a roofer. A dog that is actively engaged in legal hunting activity, including training, would not be considered running at large if the dog was monitored or supervised by a person. And the dog is on the property which the person obtained permission to be on. And then there'd be another consideration. And then my good friend, I don't know if she's here, but Sherry Lockhart has several acres. And she says, well, that would mean my dog couldn't run free. So a consideration would be for somebody that has, would have to be a certain number of acres, the owner's dog could be allowed to be free on his or her property as long as that dog was allowed to not run on other's property or bring harm to other animals or people. And of course, if not complying, the owner would be charged. And I believe in asking for the news. Y'all may look at this and say, oh, that would be too all that. But while, while I'm asking, uh, a suggestion that dogs be registered, have rabies shots, and be spayed or neutered. That would help, help our animal shelter a lot. And that finds the issue if the owner's not complying. And then the last suggestion would be, because I have a neighbor again that breeds pit bulls and this poor dog, I don't know how many livers she's had. But that breeders of dogs must have a permit to breed a dog. And there should be a limited number of times a female dog could be allowed to, uh, to breed. And I put down just, just a few. There, there are probably others, but what are the benefits? I think, I can see many benefits. Safety is one. This would prevent dogs from running at large. It would prevent bites and potential serious injuries or death to other animals, children, or adults. Also in my neighborhood, one of those, uh, pit bulls killed my neighbor's cat. And nothing to be done with it. The cat was under its owner's house. Prevent dogs from being on the roads, which can potentially cause serious automobile accidents. And of course, serious injuries too, or death to dogs. And this should decrease the production of unwanted puppies. Uh, one person talked about people dumping dogs and unwanted animals on his property. It should decrease the potential number of abandoned or neglected dogs. Potentially, this could therefore decrease the number of unwanted dogs brought to the northeast Georgia animal shelter and would therefore should help them financially. And it would allow all of the citizens of Franklin County, whether they walk in alone or with their dogs, to walk in their own neighborhood, their public roads, without the fear of being attacked by loose, uh, free running dogs. And, um, and the last thing I thought of was this could prevent injuries or death to livestock by dogs. And, um, I really appreciate y'all, uh, listening. And let me ask, any of you have any questions? I may not know if you answered, but...
Any questions? Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
And I'd love to ask you when my, you'll have an answer to do.
How about Monday?
Monday's great. I'll be here.
We believe in you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
You've got, you've got to hear, uh, several acres. How many is several?
And you know, that's a great question. Uh, yes, I, I don't know. That would be kind of up to you all to make a decision on. I don't, I don't really know. But I've actually seen some comments that, that some people have made. We do have acres. Now, see, I live in subdivision, so, you know, I'm living in, you know, here by a hundred-foot, uh, area. So I don't know the answer to that. I just thought, you know, thought of the general statement. So that would be something to consider.
Well, I'm not sure, you know, is one acre, two acre, three, ten, hundred?
Five and a half.
Five and a half. Do you know, Fred?
No, if I could comment, I ran through a husband dog that's helped on a farm. And generally, the...